Ask Mr. Levitt, you guys have just redone all of your fencing and so forth. How have you found it to work?
We have, we've found that the earlier entrance points are gone because we have, the fences are much higher and we have spikes across this top to keep out everything that's undesirable, not just the coyotes. And we have the one end of the drainage channel that's coming from the, from the base has been blocked off as long as we don't have a heavy rain event. It's the other end, we're pretty sure they're coming in now. And the other end is the Garden Grove family. We know they're coming in that way instead of coming from the back.
So it hasn't solved the problem?
It has, no, they've discovered that they can find another way to come in and they do. These are not dumb animals.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you. Someone else?
Judy Di Epifanio at 221st Street. I'm on the corner of the intersection of the flashing red lights. I want to dispute the fence issue. There is a six-foot chain link fence where two wires go over and in between the metal post is like a barbed wire. I happen to be able to witness a very, very healthy coyote go right up against the fence and do a straight up and over and completely missed the barbed wire. So, that's it.
Those were rude to the comfort.
Mayor, my name is Tom Griffith. I'm over at 208 11th Street. And a few different things, kind of ideas, and one other thing. Councilmember Levitt, I think you're right about the hybrid type of coyote. I happen to work at a power plant just up the street off Studebaker and I have personally seen some rather large coyotes, almost in the size of large German shepherds. I would say in the range of not a 25 or a 30, but closer to maybe a 45-pound dog. To the point that I was actually walking out to my turbine deck to get to my vehicle and I had three of them around my truck and I walked back into my control room and said, "Hey, guys, can take a look at this," and everybody was stunned. To the point now where when I walk around at night, because I've worked night shifts and day shifts, I walk around with a, it's a valve wrench about so big, just in case. Because you never know if an animal has already trapped something, killed it, and you walk around and now it's going to defend its prey that it's already got, so there's a possible chance of attack. On other things, we're talking about fencing, having barbed wire, or the animals dig underneath. Why can't we go ahead and have a barbed wire, a single barbed wire, go in the length of the bottom of the fence where an animal does try to dig underneath? It still has that obstacle of a barbed wire at the bottom. The other thing is the hazing. I think Chief Joe's going to get after me if I'm out there at 1:00 in the morning with a pan and a spoon and I'm hazing a dog, banging, because there's going to be some crazy guy out there trying to run off a coyote and I'm going to be waking up the public. Because unfortunately, the coyotes, they're coming at night. Last night alone, around 12:00, I just switched shifts and now I'm on day shifts, night shifts, so time is kind of weird. Coyotes at 12:00 last night, howling and yapping. I went out to outside to discover, not only was I out there, but I had two of my neighbors outside and were all looking at the green belts, trying to see what was going on. What brought me up here today was unfortunately, back on 7/13, I had gone out that night and came in around 12:00, 12:30 and walked inside, changed clothes, grabbed my dog and let him out. But unfortunately, my screen door was left open and my lovable cat that I had 14 years was unfortunately mauled and found out about it the next day by my neighbor who came and knocked at my door and said, "Hey, where's Murphy?" I called and instantly, he says I have his collar. That's all I had left. Unfortunately, he took care of the remnants and washed those down the street. And on to the hazing of the animals. Since then, I've come home, I come home at night to walk my dog while I'm at work, on my lunch hour. And I'm driving down Electric and I see a coyote on the green belt. And I stop, I get all big, and I honk, and all the damn thing did was turn around, look right at me. Got to the point where I felt like I was on the other side of the food chain. So I really don't think that's working. I'm not going to take a squirt gun to a dogfight. You know, we talked about paintballs, but we don't want to be shooting paintballs around or anything like that or people getting crazy. That's just all wrong. But we do have to do something about it. I used to work in Houston, in Houston, Texas, at the Astrodome. We had an excess of cats. And one of the things that we found out how to get rid of them is to actually trap them, spay them, and neuter them. What happens is they end up dying on their own and not reproducing. And what happens is it keeps the others at bay because they want to keep their domain. So I think it's a viable idea that we do trap and spay and neuter these guys so they won't reproduce. I don't want to kill any animals. I'm an activist on that side. I love my cat, but I'd rather have him unfortunately eaten by a coyote than killed by a car. So those are just kind of my ideas. I appreciate what you guys are doing and doing for us. I'm sure all you guys have read, Facebook has just been blown up about what's happening in Seal Beach because we've lost at least six to seven cats on 11th Street just in the last couple of weeks alone because of these coyotes. So those are my thoughts and my ideas and I appreciate your time.
Thanks for bringing ideas along with the other. Anyone else?
Hi, Gretchen Schack and I live up on the hill for 24 years, neighbors of Gordon, so he knows what is going on on our street too. In those 24 years, the coyotes pretty much hung out in the backfield. Now they're coming down to where everybody lives and down into Old Town and the Green Belt especially. They used to just be out at night. You could hear them hooing and hooting all night long. Now and then, a neighbor's cat would disappear, but it wasn't a big problem as it is now. I'm a big animal lover, so I mean, the thought of killing the coyotes really is turmoil for me. However, I feel like, you know, it's gotten to be where it's getting to be scary for people as the man before me just told. I mean, I have strobe lights in the backyard, I have lights that flick on at night, I have, I've invested in all kinds of lighting. I have flashlights to do strobe and the minute I get out of my car, I'm doing that all over the neighborhood, looking behind, you know, bushes I have underneath my car. Most of the time, if I go out and I'm not going to get home till 11:00, I have friends drive me. I don't even drive myself anymore because they just sit there with their car and the light's going, being sure I get in safely. The other night, I got home on Friday night at 11:00 and by 11:30, there was a pack of coyotes hit my side gate really, really loudly and were in my backyard. When I bought, when we bought our house on the hill, we back up to the Hellman, well, the past Hellman property. So I back up to the backfield. When we bought it, we thought it'd be fabulous because we all loved animals so much. But all the raccoons, possums, skunks, rabbits, ground squirrels, everything is gone. So I think one of the problems is the coyotes now are coming in looking for pets and anything else they can find because there is no more wildlife out there. I haven't seen a possum or a raccoon in a really long time. Paid a lot of money to have that property where I look over the backfield. It was really fun for all those years. Now, not so much fun. They come in, the other night, there was a pack of four in my backyard. They come right up to my back windows and gates. I have an inside cat that would never go out. I have a small pekinese from this shelter and he never goes out past 7:00 at night or he never goes out until 8:00 the next morning. So he has to do, have pee pads all over the house for him. The coyote report, the sightings that I've reported to the police or trying to get through to animal control, I'm never able to get through. Like if I call the police and say there's a coyote walking down the street in the middle of the day, they'll say, "We'll call animal control," but usually it just goes to an answer machine. So that's not, you know, by the time they get it, it could be the next day or that kind of thing. So I'm having a problem, you know, if we're supposed to be reporting rogue coyotes. I also work at the Seal Beach Animal Center and the other day, we had our dog walkers who start walking the dogs at 7:00 AM in the morning for the first walk. There was one of our walkers with two small dogs. She picked them up and the coyote confronted her over by the Accurate Storage area there, right below Accurate Storage. She did everything she was supposed to do. She yelled, she screamed, she had the dogs in her arms. She started picking up rocks, she was stomping her feet, she was screaming for help. Another walker came over and brought two more dogs, medium-sized dogs. The coyote continued just to stand there and starting to circle back and forth around them. So now they were really scared. They were continuing to screaming, clapping, making all kinds of noise, waving their arms, until a third walker came over with a large shepherd. So at this point, we had five dogs and three adults doing all the hazing things and finally it walked off. But then the shelter is over behind, you know, the other side of where I live and so we know they're all in the backfield like that, but they're out during the daytime. They walk along the Heron Point Road, they jump over the fence onto Seal Beach Boulevard behind the police station. We've seen them do it. Gum Grove was closed for quite a long time. We had the coyotes that had the pups that also came in my backyard with the moms at night and so no one could really use Gum Grove. We still don't walk the dogs down there. So now we've invested in air horns, so everybody that walks dogs has to take an air horn with them. And this is mostly during the day. We don't walk the dogs in the evening or we don't walk them right at dusk and we don't walk them at dawn anymore because we have daylight savings. So this is during the daytime where we're encountering all these coyotes. I know when I was a teacher in Rosmar, they hired a predator team and it did seem to help them somewhat. It just seems like, you know, when we're in Seal Beach now, we can't have any animals really that go out at night. We have a neighbor-to-neighbor website where we hear about all the different reports. The other night at 1:00 in the morning, one of the neighbors reported on Crestview that he heard all this noise of coyotes hooting, looked out his window and saw a adult, big dog being chased by a pack of six coyotes. And, you know, he went out to look and then he saw this happening. It was like terrifying. I just feel like, you know, I'm not really totally sold on the hazing because we've tried almost everything. We've tried the air horns, I have a soda can with pennies, we have people with whistles, we have banging of things. I mean, I can't do my air horn at 1:00 AM. My neighbors would kill me. But I kind of feel like, you know, we're like kind of armed when we go out for a walk. And even when I take my dog out at 8:00, I'm not sure. Someone saw a coyote the other day at 9:00 in the morning on Catalina, just up the street from me. So I think it's, you know, it's getting to be a problem for people also. I don't really understand the coyote thing about the females having more pups to do, because to me, it would be like, why do we have, wouldn't all animals do that and we would have no endangered animals? I don't, you know, like other animals, wouldn't they just reproduce more? So it doesn't totally make sense to me that just coyotes would be able to do that when we have a lot of endangered national animals. It would seem like they would never be extinct if they just continue to populate. So I'm not really totally understanding that concept. I just sort of feel like, you know, Seal Beach is such a great town and I'm afraid that we're going to eventually get to a point where, you know, it has to wait until like a child gets better or something. And then we're finally going to do something. I don't know what to do, but I mean, I'm scared. I feel like a prisoner in my own home sometimes, especially at night or early morning. And I kind of feel like, you know, I pay a lot of taxes to live here, I love the city. When the coyotes pay taxes, maybe they'd be more welcome. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else?
Hi, I'm Laura Ellsworth. I live on Coastline on the hill and I do not back up to Gum Grove. I live in a block that has cement walls and I built up a fence and I have lattice on the top as the city requests me to do. And I now have a doggy door and I have a 25-pound Boston Terrier. And I don't want to let her out at night and that's my backyard. And I'm scared because I'm hearing all of these packs that are coming. I'm reading the same thing on the next, the next-door neighbor. And, you know, we see the videos from Burbank where these coyotes in packs are coming and going after big dogs. I'm not talking about little dogs. And I'm very concerned about it and I absolutely feel like I'm a prisoner, absolutely. I don't take my dog out at night and I'm locking my doggy door and I don't think that I should have to do that in my own house.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sean Brady. I just wanted to ask the gentleman if the report that he put together, obviously attributed to Humane Society and I recognize that, I was actually going to point that out, so I appreciate you pointing that out. But my question is, did you consider any other sources in developing this presentation other than the Humane Society? For example, the work of Dr. Robert Tim, Dr. Rex Baker, this gentleman Claude Olleyer, that's O-L-E-Y-A-R. As a matter of fact, that's probably the most recent and comprehensive report that should be consulted that refutes most every of the assertions that this gentleman put forward. And I don't mean to attack him. I think that what he put together is being pushed by certain groups like the Humane Society as the common wisdom of how to handle this, but they're not an unbiased source. And I believe that these gentlemen, Dr. Tim, Dr. Baker, Mr. Olleyer, maybe less so than these other gentlemen, are sources that should be considered with peer-reviewed studies that basically say after a while, hazing doesn't work. I can understand why hazing might work in an environment like the naval base where you have a dedicated, concentrated area with dedicated military people who understand, you know, the same rigors of, "Let's haze them, they'll figure it out." But that's just not reality in society at large. I mean, it's hard enough to get a room full of people for anything. A city council meeting, how are you going to teach a whole city to haze? And you're going to ask, you know, an 85-year-old lady whose baby, you know, whose little dog is getting attacked or a mother whose child is, you know, getting followed to rush a coyote, okay? So there's more information out there. I just wanted to point that out. These, I want to bring resources. There's also a website called huntfortruth.org that explains a lot of this stuff and sort of the, some of the reasons that these policies are being pushed. If the city, if the council is so inclined, I can leave Mr. Olleyer's report with the director.
Yes, please. Do you want to summarize quickly what you think a solution might be?
Well, you know, it is, it is, there's no easy solution, let's be frank. But what Dr. Baker says is that unfortunately, and I take no particular joy in saying this, that lethal methods are the most effective in treating this. And that's trapping. And I would take issues with saying a dead coyote doesn't teach anything. It most certainly teaches coyotes are not dumb creatures, as Councilman Levitt pointed out. They are not dumb creatures at all. They are very smart, very impressive animals. And it's not so much about getting their numbers down, I don't think. So if the females, even if that is true, that they overpopulate or populate more, I don't know if it's necessarily a problem of the amount of the coyotes, it's their behavior. That report points out very clearly that it's worked in Glendale after a three-year-old girl was killed by a coyote in 1981. In the, two months after that, they went out and killed about 80 coyotes in the surrounding area, didn't have any problems thereafter with pets or anything for years. Coyotes learn that behavior. They learn to fear humans. And that's the program you, I watch Urban Jungle as well. It's not just coyotes, although they are particularly impressive predators because they're the only ones who tend to, you know, use this situation to their advantage even more so than any other creatures.
I don't know, the baboons were pretty impressive.
Yeah, I know, they are, they are. Yeah, that is true. But mountain lions in suburban Portland right now are a problem, you know? So it's animals not fearing men. And so hazing can be a component of that, I think, but it can't be exclusive. And unfortunately, the gentleman said, you know, trapping them and making them sterile, that's potentially an option, I would imagine. It also put the fear of, "Hey, I just got trapped, I'm staying away from that area and that coyote." He would teach that to other coyotes. So I don't necessarily think that, you know, I don't want them to be killed. I'm just saying that that has been shown by experts to be the most effective way. And to make them sterile, I mean, that would probably be fairly costly, as is trapping them unfortunately too, but.
Okay.
So those are my.
All right, thank you.
I'm Dorothy Owens. I live over at 315 11th Street and unfortunately, I don't know too many neighbors who haven't lost a pet over the last couple of years, especially recently. We have a couple of neighbors where that off of 11th and Landing where the preschool is, that have taken the initiative to try to clean the little park by the preschool in the morning before the children arrive of the animals so that the kids that arrive for preschool don't see the remains and they try to get up in the morning and clean the park area. And they've been doing that for quite some time and there are days that they go out there and clean up two or three cats in one morning. There have been times that a week doesn't go by that there isn't an animal remains out there. And I know a lot of it is on the Green Belt, but a lot of it is over off of the Zoder Field area also. And, but what I wanted to say, I didn't bring the statistics to sight, but on hazing, I had been reading and there's several websites that refer to the different levels of aggression in the coyotes and different stages. And the hazing seems to be more, the indications were that at level one and level two aggression, hazing seems to be very effective. When you get into level three, four, level five, where they're interacting with people and they've already lost that fear of people, which seems to be the interactions that we've had recently in Seal Beach. You know, a few years ago, that worked, but this last year, couple of years, the aggression has escalated considerably. And at that level, hazing is not as effective. And some of the communities, they've done, they have done paintball where there is pain inflicted. You're not hiding behind a bush. You're standing out there, you're still yelling, you're still screaming, you're still doing the hazing, but you have to inflict some sort of pain. You know, pellet guns, air guns, something, firecrackers, the air horns, which I thought, one of my neighbors is a volunteer at the shelter. She said she's had encounters up there where they're not even fazed by the air horns now. Sometimes they are, other times they just kind of turn and go, "Wuh!" And they don't run. The incident that the one woman had talked about, my neighbor was the woman with the German shepherd that came running. And that particular coyote, the woman that had the two small animals, the initial encounter, she was holding the animals and the coyote was within two feet of her when, as it ran by trying to grab one of the dogs. And she was, my neighbor was up the street and came running and yelling and the coyote would retreat a few feet and then turn around and come back. And it wasn't until a man came out and they were all throwing rocks and the man actually hit the coyote several times, a couple of times with the rock before the coyote retreated. So I, the hazing doesn't seem, from what she has seen with her encounters recently, the hazing isn't effective, at least up by the animal shelter. And fortunately, I, my, I don't take my dog out after about 7:00 at night. I don't take her down to the Green Belt anymore. I've got a, about a 27-pound dog and she's not that small, but I'm not going to take her out for walks, which is a shame. We should be able to walk the streets with our pets. And I won't take her out early in the morning because we've seen packs of four, I've heard reports of six coyotes a couple of times. And they're not going to be afraid of a person, they're not going to be afraid of large dogs that you get that pack mentality and they can go after any size animal at that point. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any new information that we want to share before we go back to our animal people? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dave Pincheck, 1741 Crestview. And coyote situation is very close to me and my family. Last, I'm sorry, October 2012, we lost both of our dogs. Coyotes came into our backyard. We back up to Gum Grove Park. From the Gum Grove side, our wall's 13 feet high. And when I came home, my dogs were being attacked, the coyotes went over the fence and had no problem jumping over my side, which is six and a half feet to 13 feet on the other side. So the fences are not much of a deterrent. Last Saturday, a week ago last Saturday, I was loading stuff in the back of my truck and my neighbor down the street was unable to cross the street because the coyote was approaching him and he had his two little kids with him. He was stomping his feet, clapping his hands, saying "shoo," but he couldn't leave his kids, but the coyote would not back off. So I grabbed some rocks and took off after it, threw rocks, chased it around to Catalina. It stopped as soon as it got far enough away from me. I took off at it again. I'm pretty quick, but I can't keep up with a coyote. About 10 minutes later, somebody videotaped it, took pictures and it made it on Facebook in our local newspaper. Last Monday, a week ago today, my daughter went out to take out the trash and there was a coyote in the street and a neighbor down the street yelled at her and told her to get inside, there was a coyote, but she shook the bag and kind of scared it away. I'd like to reinforce the fact that the presentation here, although it's very informative, was put together by the Humane Society. And I think the Humane Society's objection, objective is to prevent us from killing animals. And it said that the coyotes are the top predator in the area. I think we're the top predator in the area. I don't want to coexist with coyotes. They're hazardous humps. I think the coyote situation is going to be something we're going to be dealing with for a lifetime here. And the analogy I have is washing my car. I wash my car and I got to wash it again next week. And a week after that, I got to wash again because it keeps getting dirty. So the study in Colorado that states that they kill the coyotes and they keep reproducing or they come back into the area, you just keep killing coyotes and you keep killing coyotes. My question to the council is, can, if you guys aren't going to do something about this, maybe you guys can be entrepreneurs and sell coyote hunting licenses. I will pay to kill coyotes. I've got at least a dozen guys up on the hill that are more than happy to bait, trap coyotes in our yards and take them out. If that's legal and you let us do that, you guys can generate revenue from it and we'll take care of the problem if you don't take care of the problem. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Deaton.
Hello.
Hello, Council. My name is Marcella McSorley. I live at 134 Dolphin Avenue and as you may recall, last October, my chihuahua Tula was killed by a coyote. That coyote jumped into my garden area, jumping an eight-foot wind fence, and it was absolutely devastating. I'm here tonight to introduce you to Milla McSorley. She's my 45-ounce, eight-month little chihuahua. And I simply want to state that I don't ever want to go through that again and I don't think any of you do as well. And I'm here to do whatever I can do to help find a solution that's right for Seal Beach. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
I'm back. I'm Judy Di Epifanio at 221st Street. I didn't intend on sharing this. This is something that y'all at the Animal Control, whatever, isn't going to want to hear. In 1951, 1952, and 1953, with my grandparents, I was on a horse ranch. You know how big horses are?
Judy, we need to hurry, okay?
Okay.
We haven't even started the meeting yet.
Okay, so I just wanted to share that there were packs of coyotes that were attacking the horses. We had to go after them and we had to send them out. Later in Pomona, via dairy farm, we had chickens also there, as long as horses also. So what I wanted to say is we had to send them out in Pomona in '56, '57, and '58. What we noticed is we got a year to two years of peace out of that. And it didn't hurt the coyote, you know, generating coyotes. And it didn't hurt the coyote, you know, generating coyotes, because they always generated, no matter what. So I did live where I did go out with the adults to thin them out, but it's all we could do to keep the other animals alive. So I'm just speaking from experience as a small girl, and that's that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Charmin Snow, Old Town. Your comment about the breed is really interesting, because I moved here, I've lived half my life in Seal Beach and the rest of it in Idaho. And the coyote there are much smaller, really, about half the size. The first coyote I saw here in 2007 on the beach, I thought was a German Shepherd. And the guy, the guy whose lab it was chasing told me it wasn't, it was a coyote, so. But I did want to say that you might want to look into the areas that have given bounties. I mean, some states, such as Idaho, have a bounty on coyotes to get these type of guys to go out and kill them, because they are protecting the deer herds in Idaho. It hasn't, doesn't have anything to do with people or even agriculture, it's how they protect the deer herd. So I can't believe that every time states have paid a bounty, that those coyotes have reproduced at double and triple the amount like we're being told by the one-sided report. So I think that you just might want to look into contacting some states that have used a bounty on coyotes and ask them if they saw an increase in population afterwards. It could be a simple solution. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask now if Ted Stevens will come back and, with, yes?
Would you mind if I went first, just because I think I got the easy questions.
Okay, good, go ahead, Greg. Because the bottom line on this is, we're going to hold a town hall meeting, and we're going to try to do it with joint communities and see what answers have been found in the communities around us. So, go ahead.